Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fred Goodwin. I serve as the Secretary to the Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome you this evening to this joint meeting of the Planning Commission. It's being conducted both as a Zoom meeting and as a in-person, in-house meeting as well, as we transition back to regular meetings here in the council chambers. I would also like to welcome tonight, as members of the Planning Commission, four new members who were appointed by Mayor McCloskey last week. They are Winslow Armstead, Gianni Rispinto, Patrick Harwell, and Paige Wilcutt. Wilcutt, I'm sorry, Wilcutt. As I say, these are four new members who are joining us tonight, and I would like to personally congratulate them and thank them for their service to the city by serving on the Planning Commission. I would also like to recognize and thank the four former members of the Planning Commission's whose terms had expired, which allowed the appointment of the four members I just mentioned. These members were Jeff Foster, Mark Woods, James Riddle, and Billy Higginbotham. These four members, I wanted to take the time to add up how many years of service that they gave to the city through their service on the Planning Commission, and several of them also served on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. But suffice it to say that all of them served two terms and devoted many years of service and time to the city, and I wanted to go ahead and recognize and thank them for their service. Two of the members that I mentioned were currently serving as chairman and vice chairman of the Planning Commission. As I say, their terms expired, and as a result, they were replaced. But that has caused us a little bit to be temporarily leaderless on the Planning Commission. So tonight, if you've had a chance to look at your agenda, we've included an item for the election of a chairman pro tem. The chairman pro tem will be serving and presiding over this meeting tonight. He will appoint a nominating committee who will then come up with a recommended slate of individuals to serve as both vice chairman and chairman for the April meeting. So the committee's recommendation will be presented to the Planning Commission for its consideration for those two positions, as well as to consider any nominations from the floor. But those members will then serve in that capacity until the September meeting, at which time the Commission will undertake its regular annual election of officers. Having said that, I will go forward now to call the role for tonight's meeting. All right. Battalion Chief Broadhead?
Here.
Mr. John Cronteras is absent and hopefully will be with us next month. Ms. Andrus?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Armstead?
Here.
Mr. Rispinto? Mr. Harwell?
Here.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Here.
And Mr. Wilson?
Here.
All right. Okay. Next, on our agenda, will be an election, as I mentioned earlier, of a chairman pro tem. Again, this officer will serve and preside over tonight's meeting and will continue to preside until the April meeting, at which time we'll elect a new vice chairman and chairman for the remainder until September. So, having said that, we will open the floor for any nominations for the position of chairman pro tem at this time.
Mr. Secretary, I'd like to nominate Mr. Roberts.
Mr. Roberts, all right.
Second.
Okay. And are there any other nominations? All right. There being no further nominations, and Mr. Roberts, do you consent to serve?
I do.
All right. All right.
Can make a motion to pass by acclamation?
All right. All right. So moved. So, by acclamation, all those in favor of Mr. Stewart serving as chairman pro tem at tonight's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Turn your turn mic on.
Thank you. I can't read with my reading glasses with the mask on, and I can't read without my reading glasses. So I hope everyone's okay with me taking off temporarily. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I think Fred circulated some last couple of days. Did anyone have a chance, everyone have a chance to review those?
Yes.
Okay. I looked at them. I thought they looked good. If anyone else has any other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve.
Okay, Ms. Andrus?
Second.
Yes, and Mr. Wilson, second.
And if I may, that included, there were two sets of minutes, one from the February 2nd and one from the February 10th meeting. So the action is on both of those minutes, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? All right. Moving along, communications from the chairperson pro tem. I guess I would start by reiterating what Mr. Goodwin said about both our new members of the Commission. We're very excited to have you guys here. Also, would like to personally thank the outgoing members whose terms have expired, two of whom had served as chair of this group, Billy Higginbotham and Jeff Foster, and then Mark Woods, who was vice chair, and James Riddle, who had served in several leadership capacities, including, I think, for several years running our nominating committee. So I'd like to thank those guys again. I learned a lot from those guys. I appreciate their service to this Commission and to the city. I guess we probably don't have any communications from the vice chair, but I would also like, I guess, now to, I was going to ask Mr. Wilson if he'd be willing to serve as the chairperson of the nominating committee, to hopefully come up with a slate of officers for the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay. And over the next, if you have any interest in serving with Mr. Wilson on the nominating committee, please reach out to Mr. Wilson, let him know. Also, if you have any suggestions on who should be on the slate nominated by the nominating committee, please provide that feedback with him, to him as well. Okay. I guess moving along to old business, the first case is RS 21-01-01, 508 Tamworth Lane. Applicants are Tommy and Julie Cox. If you are here, if you would please come up and state your name and address and the nature of your case.
My name's Tommy Cox. Address is 508 Tamworth Lane, Homewood. We submitted all our documents and everything to propose to taking our lot and subdividing it into two lots for the purpose of being able to sell it to a prospective buyer who would put a residence on that lot. So we wanted to submit that to the Planning Commission to see if that would be approved.
Okay. And Mr. Goodwin, I think we talked about this earlier, the new lot that would be carved out of the existing lot, the second lot, meets all of the NPD requirements in terms of the width and?
That's right. Yes.
Square footage, et cetera.
We had our GIS person look at that and do the calculations, and yes, the proposed subdivision and division of these two lots, the new lot, will meet the NPD requirements, and so we'll handle it.
Okay. Mr. Cox, do you have anything else?
No. Any questions?
Okay. Well, I was going to open up to the public to comment on your case, so if you would just wait, maybe just go ahead and have a seat. We'll start with people here. If anyone from the public, this is a public meeting, if anyone from the public, either in person or joining us on Zoom, would like to speak to this case, this is your opportunity. I would ask that we start with people in this room, and if, once we're finished with comments from the room, we'll go to Zoom. So we'll start out with the people who are in the audience. Anyone want to speak to this case? Okay, we'll turn then to the Zoom attendees. I think the best way to do this is if you have a comment on this case, if you would unmute your microphone and state your name and address and share your comments. Hey, Brian, do you see anyone?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. All right. That said, we'll close the public portion of this meeting, and Mr. Cox, if you'd come back up and answer any questions from the members of the Commission. Well, if there are?
Mr. Cox, I was just going to clarify, the, from the map, the road that is labeled Dover Road, that is actually not a cut through currently, correct? And is?
It's a gravel road. My understanding, it's owned by Alabama Power. It's access to the power lines behind our property.
And from a previous hearing on the adjacent property on the other side, I know there was some anxiety over the intent of anything being done there at any point. I don't suppose that there is anything that's?
You're talking about?
It's actually labeled Dover Road. So yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Just the access to, through, any of that, anything that you would have to speak to on that?
On the other side of Dover Road? On that side of it? Yeah, I don't know who owns that property.
I will tell you, just as the ward rep, that the neighborhood would be up in arms if we opened that road up. We had some work. I think there was a piece of property that was attached to the Bricktops property that came up.
Yep, it's a little bit of a triangle.
That's right. That's right. And everybody was out, you know, voicing their opposition to that ever being opened to anything.
Anyone else with questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this case.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Andrus with the motion, Mr. Wilson with the second.
I have one quick comment regarding the measurement, and Fred, maybe you can speak to this too. When we talk about the GIS measurement and how it meets the requirement, it's effectively a result of the average of the spot, of the other lots within proximity, right? I think this is as much for the benefit of newer members of the Commission and those people who are attending online.
That's right. The review, looking at the map, that was included in your packet, you can see outlined in the green hash mark, those were the lots that were used for comparison to determine what the appropriate size needed to be for the proposed lot. And based on that, they came up with the calculation in which the new lot meets those requirements. So yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second. Mr. Goodwin, could you call the roll, please?
All right. Sure. Battalion Chief Broadhead?
Yes.
Ms. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Rispinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes. Your case passed. Thank you. Okay, that's the only matter we had in the old business. Part of the new business, the first new case is FD 21-03-021, 2611, 18th Place South. The applicant is Ryan Medley from Seane Associates. If this nominee, please come forward and state the nature of your case. If you also give us your name and your address, if you could start by giving us your name and your address.
I'm Ryan Medley with Seane Associates.
Tell us about your case while you're, why are you, what are you asking?
So this is for a proposed bank project at 18th Place South. We're proposing at building approximately 3,000 square foot building with variances.
I'm sorry, Ms. Medley, can you mind speaking a little closer to the microphone?
We're proposing building a 3,000 square foot bank building with some variances at this property.
Okay. All right. And I think we'll probably ask you some, about the variances in a few minutes, but do you have anything else that you wanted to say now before we open it up?
No.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. If you would just have a seat while we wait for the public to comment. This is a public hearing. As I said earlier, we would like to call people first from the audience and then go to Zoom. So we'll start now. Does anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? There being none, we'll go to Zoom. As I said earlier, if you have a comment from Zoom, please unmute your microphone and go ahead and get started, and you can do so now. Okay, Brian, I hear nothing from the Zoom crowd. Have you seen anyone indicate that they want to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, that'll close the public portion. Ms. Medley, if you don't mind coming back up, we entertain questions from the Commission. And I'll go ahead and start. I mentioned a moment ago, we probably have some questions about the variances, and we note that on one of your drawings, there's six different variance requests. Can you explain each of those, what you're asking for?
So one of those variances is for the proposed monumental sign located in the right-of-way of Rosedale. This right-of-way is maintained by the city.
And Ms. Medley, I'm sorry again, would you mind just speaking a little closer to the microphone? It's hard to hear.
Do you feel comfortable taking off your mask?
Yeah, I can take off my mask.
At this distance? Yeah, I think it'll help. Yeah, thank you.
So one of those variances is for the proposed monumental sign located in Rosedale right-of-way, and that right-of-way is maintained by the city. We confirmed. Another variance is for one of the required trees, of six required trees, to be located in that right-of-way as well. We're also showing an encroachment for the sidewalk, a storm flume, and a portion of the parking space within that right-of-way. And this plan also sets the southern side setback in this development plan. We're proposing having a 15-foot side setback with a maximum five-foot encroachment for the canopy of that building. We're also asking for a variance from the five-foot wide premier landscaping requirement. And I think that covers the variances that we requested.
And, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to catch you off.
There is one I did leave out. We're proposing having four parking spaces that are partially located within 18th Place's South right-of-way. But that concludes the variances.
Okay. With respect to the monument sign you described, is the only variance request that it be in the right-of-way, or is there anything about the sign itself that's otherwise non-compliant?
I think the only item is that it's in the right-of-way.
Okay. And the parking space you said was in the right-of-way, is that the one that's reflected? It looks like it's under the tree that would also be in the right-of-way?
Yes.
And then with respect to the five-foot landscape variance, can you explain, you know, why you need that?
In order to provide all of the parking spaces that the bank needs, we had to really construct that parking lot right up to the property line, both the north and the southern sides.
Okay. I see for the, it looks like for the drive-through as well, you needed that on the south side?
Mm-hmm.
Another question, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to ask about the landscaping. You are meeting the landscaping requirements, just that it, part of it is in the right-of-way. That's the only variance, but you are meeting the landscape requirements?
Yes. We do have the pretty wide island along the front of the property that we are going to provide all the required trees, except for the one that's in the right-of-way.
So I'm just clearing. So you're not providing one tree, but you will be providing other, the other trees required?
So there are six required trees, and five of those will be located on the property within that front landscaped island, and we're proposing to have one of those required trees be in the right-of-way. So we're providing all the trees that are required.
One of them would just be in the right-of-way. Okay.
So the ones in the photos now, you're going to, I guess, replace?
Sorry, say that again.
The larger trees that are in the photos now, are you going to replace those with new trees?
Sorry. Can you say that again?
The ones that are in the photos right now, are you going to replace those with new trees?
The trees that are?
The trees that are in the right-of-way are going to remain.
Okay.
So any other questions from the Commission?
I'm going to ask one more question about, if that's okay. You mentioned a sidewalk. This is, this is the property that's at the end of Mamie El Foster, is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
And I know that gets kind of wonky over there where that street is. It's like a street, but not a street, but a driveway kind of thing. Are you doing any, is part of your development plan at all any improved connectivity sidewalk? But yeah, you mentioned a sidewalk, so is that part of this?
That sidewalk is really just the sidewalk that's along the front of that building to connect those parking spots to the bank. So it's extending a few feet into the right-of-way. But we are not showing, adding any sidewalk along those on-street parking spaces, because there are no sidewalks to connect to.
With the right-of-way around 280 being a US highway, do we need approval from Department of Transportation for that, or is that something we can approve?
We have reached out. Yeah, we confirmed with ALDOT that this portion is maintained by the city. I think the ALDOT maintained portion stops at Highway 31.
They deferred the review and said that's to be reviewed by the city, and they did not. We reached out to them to request, but they didn't feel like they wanted to be involved or needed to review.
So who in the city reviews that? Us, or is there a staff member?
We're reviews to see.
Well, you get the right-of-way, you put stuff in the right-of-way, you're going to go to the US highway, you're blocking it in some way.
Is that something that, somebody reviews to make sure we're?
Yeah, I would.
The staff side is comfortable with?
The staff.
Yeah, I think that would have to, they would have to go through the staff before that's even a variance that we could, we could even entertain.
Yeah.
So that?
I have not been a part of that review personally, but I know our staff has looked over these plans and have worked with the applicants to make sure that these are correct. So, yeah, that's Inspection Services Department. That's only.
Thank you. So the ingress from Highway 280 is going to be the same as it is right now? It's just a left turn across the traffic lane, as far as if you're coming in between the gas station and what is now the car wash? So you're doing the whole, can you let me through the thing, wave whoever stopped at that street, 19th Street South heading out 280, outbound?
If I might respond?
Yeah.
As, this project is being done in conjunction with an alignment on the street being corrected. You know, there's a jog in the driveway there, and this project is going to straighten all that out. It is going to use the existing opening at the median. And so what you see there is an accurate reflection of where the opening in the median is at the top of the page, and it would be used, the opening in the median would continue to be used for accessing in. We are sliding the driveway down slightly, but we're straightening Mamie Foster as the right-of-way actually is straight there, and I don't know why sometime in the past it got jogged over, but we're fixing that and making it straighter, and as part of that, making it more of a streetscape type up here, so there's actually a street and not just kind of a crazy uncontrollable area.
Launching pad?
Yeah.
Right. And the, in the parking spaces that will be outbound, out of the parking lot, angled in that direction per the drawing?
Well, the parking stalls that are shown are diagonal.
Right.
So there is a circulation that is counterclockwise, looking down at the drawing. And so as you drive through, it is a one-way drive through the front parking lot in front of the building, but the parking spaces out on Mamie Foster are set up so that it would be the northbound drive is an angled park. They would back out, much like any other streetscape in this area that's underway, and would back, you know, back out and go straight up and straight north.
Hey, Stewart, Wyatt Pugh has raised his hand. He is online.
Okay, Wyatt?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just wanted to speak to the straightening out of 18th Street, 18th Place, excuse me, and Mamie Foster. I spoke with the mayor and council president today about that project. Mr. Moran has already paid for all of the engineering costs on that, and it's going to be sent out to bid, so the city will be taking care of that project, in case that was a concern about that crooked portion of the end of 18th Place there, as it ties into Rosedale. City's going to take care of that.
Okay, thank you. So I guess that the parking that you're asking for a variance is just essentially just the off-street parking for what the new street, the new Mamie Foster are approved?
Much like the streetscape project that's under construction right now.
If there are no more questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve this case.
I move to approve.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay.
No, I was just going to get through the.
Ms. Andrus with the motion, the second from Mr. Wilson. If you could call the roll, please.
Battalion Chief Broadhead?
Yes.
Ms. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Rispinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes. Thank you, your case is approved. Okay, our third case, our second new case, last case of the day, is?
Interrupt you just for a second?
Certainly.
I'm Rusty Boylan with, work with Mike Moran and Mamam Investments. I want to thank you all for your consideration of this, and hopefully we can continue doing all these improvements for Homewood. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Boylan. Okay, so our final case is FP 21-03-07, 1591 Forest Ridge Road. Applicant is Chris Williams. I think I see Mr. Williams on the Zoom screen. Mr. Williams, if you could just please state the nature of your case. the nature of your case.
Yes, my name is Chris Williams, Carlisle Creek Construction. I live at 130 Keeneland Green, Pelham, Alabama. And we're asking for the Commission to approve the final plat for our Forest Ridge Road subdivision, a private subdivision of seven lots.
Okay, this is a public hearing. While there's no one in the audience now, if anyone on Zoom would like to comment on this case, please unmute your microphone and share your comments. Brian, any life, signs of life out in the Zoom crowd?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll close the public portion then, and then, Mr. Williams, please answer any questions the Commission may have for you.
I'd just like to confirm the proffered items that we have on the proposed addition to covenants and restrictions, items one through five. I believe you've already agreed to?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
For the sake of those on the Zoom call who might not be aware, and everyone present, these items were proffered by the applicant.
Right. And as I had indicated earlier, you're correct. There were several conditions when this was originally reviewed by the Planning Commission back in 2018. And just to remind Commissioners that a preliminary plat for this same site was approved last month's meeting. But just to reiterate, there were several conditions agreed to by the developer and the city of Homewood relative to the sprinkling of the houses to be built, as well as the accessibility of the roadway in terms of its width and the ability of the fire vehicles to be able to turn around. So, those conditions are included in your packet, and as I said, we as staff would like to request that the approval include these conditions being listed as a note on the final plat, so that they will be tied with the land to that, so.
In addition, there's a one-page letter dated August 27, 2018, to Fire Marshal Nick Hill that lays out some of the same things, but it's signed by the owner and the developer. I assume we want that to be included as part of the plat as well, so the applicant can confirm that as well.
Yes, that is correct.
Anyone else, any other questions?
Can I ask real quick? The lot that's at the end of the cul-de-sight, looks like it's just woods. Is that owned by anybody in particular, anybody planning on building on it? Is it going to stay woods, or?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what you're referring to. Is that the part of the Huntington Glen neighborhood adjacent to ours?
That's correct, yeah.
That is currently an empty lot. I don't know who owns it, but I do know it was previously for sale, but there's not currently a for-sale sign on it now.
Thanks.
And I would note, you know, that we did send out notification of this public hearing to all adjacent property owners, which would include the owners of that property to the north of the subject property.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this case.
Motion to approve FP 21-03-07.
Can I second that?
Mr. Wilson with the motion, Mr. Armstead with the second. Please call the roll.
Okay. Battalion Chief Broadhead?
Yes.
Ms. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcutt?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Your case passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Presentations, communications of the board. I don't think there are any. I think I would take this opportunity to remind everyone to reach out to Mr. Wilson if you have any interest in serving on the Nominating Committee for our elections next month. And also, the same to Mr. Wilson and anyone on the Nominating Committee, if you have any nomination people that you want to suggest to serve, so.
And I'll reply to the email with my cell phone number if anybody wants to discuss.
All right. Well, with that, I'll take, accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I think that closes our meeting.